Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, August 1st, 2011, City of Waukegan City Council Meeting. Could everybody take their phones out and please turn it to silent? You two Aldermen, Tempest, now that you have a phone, you've got one to turn to silent.
I gotta find out how to do it. To read the directions is tough.
If we ring it, we'll just turn it off.
Okay, could we please rise for a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, roll call.
Alderman Bedling.
Here.
Alderman Newsome.
Here.
Alderman Tempest.
Here.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Valco.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Alderman Conkin.
Present.
Alderman Moisey.
Thank you.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Well, first we'll lead off with my mayor's comments. And, you know, we got a really nice letter the other day in regards to one of our employees that had helped a woman. And, you know, it's unusual, we usually get so many letters that people are upset about something, you know, mostly complaints and/or concerns, but it was nice to get this. And the employee's name is Betty Peterson, she works down in our collector's office, I believe, if I remember correctly. And I'd like to read this to you, just so you could hear it. And I believe that Betty is here this evening.
She did have a family emergency.
Oh, well, we'll read it, but we can do it again in two weeks for her family. I don't mind rerunning it, it's nice to be able to read something like this. Says, "To whom it may concern, dated July 21st of 2011. I'm sending this letter on behalf of Ms. Betty Peterson, who assisted me on Friday, May 13th, 2011, in the Waukegan," it says Court Building, but I'm sure they meant City Hall. "Unfortunately, I was very unorganized, I had nothing together, and on top of that I was running late. It was time to close the office down, and it was 4:55, and everyone was preparing to go home. Ms. Peterson not in any way displayed her readiness to go. Ms. Peterson was very professional, courteous, polite, and very forth willing to assist me. I purchased three city stickers and one animal license. I feel very strongly about sharing this good news about our good people that I might come in contact with during our very troubled times. I'm hoping I'm not out of line for asking that Ms. Betty Peterson be rewarded or recognized in some small way. I am grateful for her kindness, and it's thank you, Gloria J. Barnes, on May Street here in Waukegan." And it's always nice to get these, because we do hear an awful lot of complaining and issues that arise when people are in the building, because most often times when you come into the City Hall, it's a lot of times to do something that you're maybe not real happy that you have to do, like pay a parking ticket, or your water bill, or a late fee on your water bill, whatever it might be. And I've known Betty for quite a while, and she, I have to tell you, she is a sweetheart. She's a very even-tempered, very, very energetic and dedicated employee, and it's something that, we'll do this again in two weeks, so that her family, she can be here with her family, and hopefully the family emergency is not of the kind that would ruin the next two weeks for her. So we're hoping for the best. I'm gonna lead off my mayor's comments here, and they're a little bit longer, because we have a lot of things that I wanted to talk about real quick. As we all know, last week, we took another big hit with some very violent and wet weather. Many areas of the city were affected by flooding, some of it quite severe. Rainfall amounts were in the extreme, with downtown and much of Waukegan receiving 3.5 inches in about 45 minutes, but others received even more, ranging close to five inches in that same timeframe. The stormwater systems in the area were overwhelmed by the event, and that resulted in a number of homes having water coming up in the basement, or in some of the more extreme instances, pouring into windows and through doors into basements and first floors. I have to thank once again our employees, Tom Haggerty and his guys at Public Works, Chief Young and the gentlemen and women over at our fire department, and Chief Greathouse and his folks over at the police department for their quick response and hard work in mitigating the effects of the rain. One of the area's hardest hit was in the Midlane Country Club subdivisions. The volume of water and the rapidity of the movement that I personally witnessed were at times truly frightening. I know there are several homeowners here tonight who will speak to the effects that the more recent development around the golf course have had on their lives and property. There is no doubt that the changes in topography and the reduction of permeable surfaces has had some impact on the flooding. When I saw how much the landscape has been altered out there, I was caught by surprise. The fact that it was done without a better understanding of the effects that would later be seen clearly the day of the storm and afterwards as the water drained was very disturbing to me. We are going to have to gather everyone involved in this situation, which includes the county, the forest preserves, stormwater management, and our own engineering department, and work to provide some measurable relief for those homeowners. Unfortunately, our financial situation does not put us in a good place to simply get in there and fix what is wrong, but we can at least begin to better understand what happened and prepare the groundwork for an eventual solution out there, as well as some of the other problem areas that have consistently seen negative effects from strong rain events in the past. For years, we have done little to improve our stormwater infrastructure around Waukegan, instead simply responding to emergencies and failures on a case-by-case basis. If we are ever going to get a handle on the failing infrastructure of this community, we will have to bite the bullet and understand that the majority of the work that needs to be done will have to be paid for by the residents of Waukegan. After all, flooding streets and parking lots hurts the bottom line of our business community, and flooded basements, or worse, drives up insurance rates for every homeowner. It is a pathway we must not continue to follow. People and businesses won't move to a city, or much less stay in one, that has a reputation for flooding and the high costs that accompany such infrastructure failures. Now, last Saturday, the Waukegan Main Street Organization hosted the Art and Wine Stroll in our downtown. Over 300 advance tickets were sold, and while I don't have the most current attendance numbers, it does seem it was a fantastic success. I want to thank our public relations director, David Motley, for all the hard work he put into the event, as well as the efforts by Main Street Director Violet Ricker, and all of that organization's hard-working volunteers. My thanks also go out to all of the businesses that opened their doors to allow attendees to enjoy a wide variety of art and to sample wines and snacks during the event. We will continue to work with our partners to increase the number of such events and to try to branch out into new experiences and happenings that will help keep bringing new faces into our community. I believe that every one of these events is a solid step in the rebirth of our community, and I would like to encourage everyone to come to the next Art Walk event coming up, I believe, later this August 20th. Thank you. The last event brought over 800 people into town, including such luminaries as the lead singer and songwriter for the Smashing Pumpkins, Billy Corrigan. I was told he was impressed by the event, and hopefully he will get word out to his colleagues and friends that Waukegan is a great place to come to for a smashing good The BRAC recommendation. BRAC stands for Base Realignment and Closure. The City of Waukegan has a unique opportunity to further cement our partnership with District 60, as we work together to improve the education of our young people in this community. District 60, the Department of Defense, and the Department of Education have approached the City of Waukegan and asked that we make available to District 60 property that the DOD had put into the base realignment and closure process. Initially, it was thought that this building would be used for our police department for training and office space. The city initially began heading into that direction by working with local housing agencies to fulfill an agreement that had the city acquire, refurbish, and place on the market for sale distressed or foreclosed residential properties. This program did not cost the city any real money, since all the properties were sold at a break-even or better amount. As we reviewed the concept, it was soon evident that the city could not afford to take the building and refurbish it, so that it was usable by our police. The terms of the BRAC agreement would not allow us to mothball the building while we set aside funds to make use of the structure. It had to go into quick use, or it could be auctioned to the highest bidder for any use, including low-income housing, something which that area has a surplus of now. There has been a great deal of discussion and disagreement on the part of members of the council about this opportunity. I have taken the stand that this building would be best utilized by District 60, and I would like to take several minutes to say why. According to a study developed by the Division of Educational Leadership and Policy Studies, College of Education, Arizona State University, and the School of Education, University of Colorado, multiple analyses conducted over 25 years have found preschool education to produce an average immediate effect of about half a point a standard deviation on cognitive development. This is the equivalent of seven or eight points on an IQ test, or a move from the 30th to the 50th percentile for achievement test scores. For the social and emotional domains, estimated effects have been somewhat smaller, but still practically meaningful, averaging about 0.33 standard deviations. To put those gains in perspective, it's important to realize that on many measures, a half-standard deviation is enough to reduce by half the school readiness gap between children in poverty and the national average. Dozens of studies have examined preschool education's long-term effects, providing information on the effects into elementary school and beyond. Recent meta-analysis of these find that preschool education has significant lasting effects on cognitive abilities, school progress, such as grade repetition, special education placement, and high school graduation, and social behavior. Estimated effects decline as students move from immediate experience to elementary school to adolescents and to adult follow-up. Thus, long-term effect sizes are smaller, and are roughly 0.10 to 0.20 for cognitive abilities, 0.15 for school progress, and 0.15 to 2.0, I'm sorry, 0.20 on social behavior, including delinquency and crime. A study named the Perry Study followed 123 children from preschool well into adulthood. Researcher's ability to study nearly the entire original group over time allows confidence in long-term findings. The initial cognitive advantage from the preschool program was seen to decline over time, partly because the public school experience appeared to help the control group catch up once they entered kindergarten. While there was no persistent effect on IQ, the study found a persistent effect on achievement tests through middle school, a finding consistent with results from the meta-analysis of all relevant research literature. In addition, the preschool group had better classroom and personal behavior, as reported by teachers, less involvement in delinquency and crime, fewer special education placements, and a higher high school graduation rate. Through age 40, the program was associated with increased employment and earnings, decreased welfare dependency, and reduced arrests. In a study published by the National Institute for Early Education Research, it was found that in the past 25 years, a series of well-designed and well-implemented model preschool programs have shown significant effects on young children's cognitive growth. These include not only effects on reading achievement and literacy scores, but also on reduced rates of grade retention and of special education placements, and higher rates of high school graduation. Although there is some debate about how to interpret the results of Head Start evaluations, carefully designed studies of Head Start have shown positive effects on children's early learning. In a review of the long-term academic impacts of both model and large-scale public preschool programs, including Head Start, a study that took place in 1995 and again in 98, found that public programs often had weaker effects than generally high-quality and better implemented model programs. Nevertheless, even public preschool programs showed significant positive effects during the elementary grades. Taken together, the research evidence indicates that preschool education is one avenue to reducing the achievement gap. I cannot see anything but positive effects on this community by such a program, and given the reduction in likely criminal behavior, and a possible reduction on reliance on government largess, I believe we need to support this initiative by District 60. The best way we can provide such support would be to enable them to take control of the unused military base that is part of the Department of Defense BRAC program, and is located on Macquarie Road here in Waukegan, and use it to house such a program under the auspices of our local school district. We have held a series of public meetings regarding this property, which was first offered to the City of Waukegan, and was being considered for use by our police department. After careful review of the property and factoring in the city's financial health, the BRAC Board has recommended that the property go to District 60. We have plenty of room for our police department to expand in the old City Hall building, which has had over a quarter million dollars of improvements put into place, including new HVAC and a new roof. The BRAC Committee's recommendation comes with the full backing of the Waukegan Police Department leadership. Our police department will get the use of two outbuildings at the site, one for storage of materials and vehicles, and the other being a functioning car wash that can be used by all of our departments. The school district has agreed to work with the city to minimize the impact of traffic on not only this location, but also in the adjoining Clearview School, the district's largest when measured by student population, grade school. When all of this is factored in, and the long-term positive impact that such a program will have on our children is considered, I see this as a win-win for the community. And I will take, we have audience time. First up to speak is Maricela and Jose Maldonado. If you would please come up to the podium, and repeat your name and address for the record,
Hello. My name is Maricela Maldonado, and we live at 1701 West York House Road. This past Wednesday, 7:27, our home was inundated with 12 feet of water. Unfortunately, this is not the first time this has happened. Two years ago when this happened, we had called the city, because it seemed that we had a clogged storm drain. We called the city, and they said that they would send someone out to look at it. Nothing was ever communicated to us. So aside from our cleanup costs, our rebuilding costs, and replacing all our items that we lost, we also took it upon ourselves to improve our property by adding more sump pumps, more drainage pipes, to redirect the water to the back of our property. And we have had no problems until now. I want everyone to consider something, that during the winter, we are told to shovel and push all the snow that we get on our property, only onto our property. We don't push it across the street, and we don't push it onto our neighbor. And I think it's unfair that we are expected to handle the water that came from Lewis Avenue, through the neighborhood, across Cornell, and into my driveway. We are still anxiously awaiting to hear Mr. McGavin's, to hear from Mr. McGavin, the outcome of the investigation, as what came through our house was a strong current of water that knocked down our basement door, and within a matter of minutes filled our basement and the first level of our home. We lost our washer, our dryer, our furnace, our refrigerator, furniture, clothes, shoes, walls, carpeting, televisions, everything. I placed at least three phone calls to the city during this time, and was told that help was on the way. All I saw were city trucks passing by, one actually stopped and said, "Yeah, you got water." Luckily, one of our neighbors topped a manhole cover, and the water drained through there, otherwise the damage would have been more extensive. My husband and I have invested a lot of time and money in our home, and we are requesting that careful consideration be given to this problem immediately, as the city needs to do something more to protect us, the homeowner. If you will note, there are no culverts or drains for redirecting water on York House Road and Cornell in our area. And if something is not done, it will continue to happen. It's to the point that we no longer feel safe or secure in our home. And I did listen to your comments, Mr. Mayor, and I understand that there's an insurance cost and everything else, but insurance isn't gonna cover our costs, they don't cover fresh rainwater, and they don't consider us a flood zone or a flood area. So, that's all I have to say.
Good evening, Council Mayor. I'm here tonight to voice my frustration and ask for a solution with the street flooding and sanitary sewer line backups that have occurred three times in the last four years, 2007, 2009, and 2011 in our area. A problem seems to have developed in this area related to stormwater drainage and the sanitary sewer system. First off, I'd like to thank Alderman Valco and Mayor for their quick response, showing up in person, which is the first time that's happened when our floods. Listening to our frustrations during this latest disaster for making arrangements to remove the debris from the parkway that we encountered. The intersection at Burr Oak Drive and Cashmore floods from stormwater during heavy rain events. It then does not properly drain to the golf course, and the sanitary line backs up into our homes. There were at least 13 homes that I know of that had backups from the sanitary sewer on Crest Court, Burr Oak Drive, and Cashmore Road on July 27th. The previous storms, I'm not sure of, although I can attest that we had sanitary backups on those two previous years. One of my questions to the city is why the sanitary line is so prone to becoming infiltrated with stormwater, causing it to back up into our homes. I think the city needs to find where the sanitary line system is taking on stormwater. I believe in 2008, a company called Inficon, I'm going by memory from the letter I received, was hired by the city to do a cross-connection survey, and that's where people will take their sump pump and discharge it into the floor drain or the slop sink, so when their sump pumps are running, it's not discharging it to the grade or to the storm system, it's directly into the sanitary system. I don't know if I can obtain these results from the study from the city at all, but I would surely throw a few emails around, maybe to the engineering department, or Public Works, to see how I can get my hands on the results from the survey. Furthermore, my property is adjacent to the Link subdivision that was constructed at a much higher elevation than our existing subdivision in my area. I'm receiving a large amount of stormwater runoff from the Links that comes directly across my property and then against my foundation. This should not happen. There should have been a berm constructed between the lots to carry the stormwater runoff along the rear property lines down to the golf course detention, not across my property. I would like to finish by saying, after the flooding in '09, our homeowner's insurance was dropped from our flood, our flood coverage was dropped from our homeowner's insurance due to our claims in '07 and '09. I can't obtain insurance coverage with other companies because of past claims. The flooding damage that occurred to my property last week will cost me at least $15,000 or restore back to the way it was, money I do not have. I'm asking the city to please find a solution to this problem. It has affected my family's livelihood, there's potential health issues, and our neighborhood's property values. It's been a very emotional week, and it's just getting to be too much. That's all I have to say, and I will be sending emails around looking for information as to why this isn't draining properly. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's David Stewart. I live at 3230 Burr Oak Drive, two houses down from Ken Strathman. Mayor and City Council, thank you for this opportunity to speak before you. I also would like to thank the mayor, and our aldermen, and the Public Works for a great response. The mayor was out over and over and over again in our neighborhood, and we're really, really grateful for that. We've lived there for 20 years now, and when we first moved there, we had a great big giant field behind our house. This was before all the development at Midlane. And once they started developing back there, we're kind of at the low end of our neighborhood, and then they raised the property up behind us, so they could build houses with walkout basements. For years after they built those houses, Augusta Drive, we back up to the house on Augusta Drive, for years, anytime it would rain, even moderate rain, we would get a river running through our backyard. When it rained hard, the river would come to the back of our, to our foundation, pour over the window wells into our basement. We had flood after flood after flood after flood after flood. We finally were able to get the city engineer to come out, and he brought the plans out, the approved plans for Midlane's development, and he said, "Where is the swale, and where is the storm drainage that they committed to put in?" It was never put in. And so the city required the developers at Midlane to build the swale, put in the storm sewer, and connect it like, out to the water hazard, the way it was supposed to be done originally. That's just one example of the kinds of problems that we have faced with that development around us, where Midlane agreed, the city approved certain procedures, and then Midlane didn't carry through on them. The construction road is another one that I could go on for hours about, but I won't. I would just ask the city to investigate, again, the water drainage, the storm sewers, the sanitary sewers, and find out if things are built back there the way they're supposed to be. We're taking on their water. When they wanted to build and build and build more back there, a group of us fought it, we were able to shrink the number of houses that were put back there, but they kept saying, and I remember sitting in your, at your kitchen table talking about that, Alderman Tempest. And everything we heard from, you know, in the meetings we came to was, all these 300 new homes, these 500 new homes, they're not gonna have any impact on water, they're not gonna have any impact on sewer, they won't have any impact on traffic, they won't have any impact on fire protection. Well, they've had impact on my property, my family, my neighborhood, my home, and I would ask the city to do a thorough investigation, to see if the infrastructure at Midlane is where it's supposed to be and built the way it's supposed to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Patty Hook. I live at 4465 West Cherry Tree Court, Wadsworth. My home is the nearest home adjoining Midlane Golf Course, and it's right by the big entrance sign to the Midlane Club housing development. It's a beautiful, contemporary, custom home, and it's a very unusual layout, but 65% of it now is damaged, because, not because of anything that the city did, it's the way the housing company, which is now J. Lawrence, how they bermed my property in. When I bought it, it was flat, you know, it's beautiful, it's still very beautiful-looking, but they put berms on two and a half sides of my land, and they're up to, at some point, you know, six and seven feet tall, even taller. So unfortunately, there are three storm sewers, but they're all on the opposite side of the berms. There's nothing on my side. So they locked me in. One of the guys from the fire department, he said, "You're like a fish in a fishbowl." And I said, "Yeah." Three storm sewers where they had no water running to them, and I was desperate, and I lived there alone, and so Mayor Bob came over, which was awesome, and he brought some city workers and some shovels, and they just started, you know, plowing through, by hand, underwater with the shovels, and then you could see thousands of gallons of water rush through to the storm sewers, which were eager to take the water. But my, you know, I have lots and lots of damage, it's not covered by my insurance company, I'm trying to get the, you know, the builders over there to handle it, I hope that I can. But I'm not sure how, you know, how those berms could be built when they have such a big impact on my home, and, which was beautiful before, but how they can do that, I mean, if they, if there are permits, or where the permit's not issued, you weren't sure either. They don't seem to be any sort of code that, you know, like, why didn't somebody look at my house and think, "Wow, you know, if we ever rain, she's stuck." You know, we fenced her in, maybe we should put a storm sewer or something. So it's, I don't think it's the city's fault, I think it's the housing complex's fault, but I'm the one stuck in the middle, and I don't know, you know, about permits, I don't know about codes, I just know what I know about. But I just wondered how that could happen, and if, how to not let it happen to anybody else again. It was, it was up to my thighs outside, and... It was, it was, it was up to my thighs outside, and, and I had seven inches of water, but it's sixty-five percent of my home. I'm a graphic designer, it ruined all my files, it ruined so many things in my home that aren't, you know, replaceable, really. So I, I just wondered about the coding thing, the permits. If they were built without permits, or if, you know, these, whatever the codes are have to be really looked at because they have major impact on me without me having any say in it. But you were awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane Verratti, twenty-five ninety-seven Club Home Lane. Before I get into what I'm going to say, I just want to say how sad I am to hear your stories. I'm so sorry. We all live in this community, and what affects you affects us, too, so, I mean, I sure hope that a solution can be found for your issues, and know that, you know, we're neighbors, even though we might not live on the same street, we, we just certainly feel for you. I'm here, again, to represent Walkman, Walkhegan Residents for a City Manager.
Nice tune, Alderman.
Uh-oh.
Just took my phone away.
Your, your phone was confiscated, Alderman.
I told you I didn't know how to turn it off yet. I'm still reading the book.
I'm here again to represent Walkman, Walkhegan Residents for a City Manager. This is a grassroots organization, and we're just feeding you bits of information at every city council meeting. Our mission is to enhance Walkhegan's ability to thrive in today's challenging economic climate by hiring a professional city manager to assist our elected officials in operating our city with the efficiency of a successful business. And this evening's point of information, no business could ever operate at peak efficiency and proficiency with nine CEOs. Alderman, we have elected you as our representatives. Each of you answers to a particular constituency with specific issues, and we don't expect any one of you to be knowledgeable about every aspect of running a city the size and complexity of Walkhegan. What we do expect is that you will champion our vision, set goals to reach that vision, and shepherd the vision through the processes to fulfillment. This is why we feel that the City Manager Council form of government is ideal for Walkhegan, because it brings together these two great needs of a city, vision and expertise. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Perry Foster.
Perry Foster, twenty-two twenty-six Kingston Road. And I would like to talk about what she had just brought up. I also have been looking in, or, but the city mayor versus the city planner, and I, for one, is against it in a sense that the city planner doesn't answer to the citizens of Walkhegan, which I feel that we would lose our right to be able to vote in or vote out a city planner. As we talked here, Mayor Bob, Alderman, we're out at, think, the city planner would not be out amongst the citizens of Walkhegan. They're, they wouldn't have to answer to any of us. There's been occasions where I have met with the mayor, and he's graciously listened to my issues. We may not have agreed on what we were discussing, but I respect him for at least meeting with me and going over that, and I, I respect him for that. If we, the city makes a bad decision on hiring a city manager, the cost of getting rid of a city manager would, you know, be, you know, substantial, more than voting in or voting out a mayor. The, you know, talking about a city planner being a, having a master's degree, a doctorate degree, we're probably talking, you know, close to two-hundred thousand or more for salary for this gentleman, or lady, I should say. Also, the number of people who with a qualified degree in the city management is small, and I doubt very seriously if there's any in this local area that has a degree in city management, which means we're going to need to bring in somebody from the outside who doesn't have any, what's going on in Walkhegan. So it's like, what stake are they going to have in Walkhegan? I believe, I passionately feel that if we hire somebody for Walkhegan, they should live in Walkhegan, they should pay city taxes in Walkhegan, they have no stake in Walkhegan, their children don't attend our schools, they don't have to worry about our, being our streets being safe, our fire department, they can lay off whoever they want, and there's no, no issues with them because they don't live in the city of Walkhegan. I believe the person should have stake in the city of Walkhegan, citizens should have a right to vote in and out our mayor based on how well we feel they're doing. The next current concern I have is with the police department. It seems like we keep dismantling our police department, and I'm concerned with that. I, I'm concerned with the lack of training. You read the paper where other communities or police departments are in, adding departments, and we seem to be taking our departments away from our, our deal. We lost eight officers, I know six of them, I think, are at different departments. We incurred the costs of sending them to the academy, we had costs of training them, and the other cities are reaping our benefits now. And unless we become a Andy and Barney Police Department, we're going to eventually have to rehire, which means we're going to have to incur that cost again. So we've gone from a hundred and seventy-some officers down to a hundred and thirty-some. I think that the city needs to look at where we're cutting and what we need to do to keep our city safe. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Foster.
Joyce Evans, eight-twenty-nine McCullister, Walkhegan. The mayor just said people are always coming down complaining. Well, I do them both, both, I praise and I complain. But first of all, I want to praise, I see a great, great difference in our city, not just the South Side, but the whole city of Walkhegan, and I want to thank the chief for that, because the noise, you can't sleep better at night. I'm not getting a lot of people complaining, "Well, Joyce, would you do this, would you do this?" And I'm jumping all over the city. Usually I'm up on Saturday night, meeting the police on this corner, on that corner, but it's getting less and less, and again, I want to thank the chief and the police department for that. Now, I want to drop a little nugget here. Back in the sixty, I think it was the mid-sixties, we had a riot here where they had to call in the National Guards. Maybe some of you remember it and some of you don't, but the thing we're having here is there is a lot of police harassment still going on. I see it. This is something no one's telling me. So when people come here to tell you about it, you know, you don't have to take their word, but look into it, because we are living in a different generation, and the people today, they are crazy, and they don't mind rioting, and they're tired of, and they're, the way the, the system is now, people don't have, they don't have jobs, they don't work, and all this stuff, and people are really getting tired. So when someone comes down here and tells you about a police officer, look into it, just don't let it go, because people can't take in too much today. And another thing I want to say is that, I'm losing my thought, but anyhow, look into whatever they're saying, because we don't need no riot. We're always talking about how beautiful the city of Walkhegan is, and we want to leave it that way, and we don't need news hitting about a riot in Walkhegan. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Violet Ricker. I live at two-oh-three West Water Street in downtown Walkhegan. I'm the executive director of Walkhegan Main Street, our downtown development nonprofit, and I just wanted to give you a quick update on our events over the past weekend and what we've got coming up in August. Thank you, Mayor, for mentioning the wine and art stroll, and I want to thank the aldermen who were able to attend, and as well as a lot of the city residents, and we had a great number of visitors from outside of Walkhegan attending the event. We had over four-hundred-and-fifty people attend, which is twice as many as we did last year, so we are really excited about that. For those of you who came, everybody received a map, and the aldermen, you have this in your packets today, of over thirty participating businesses, that we had, twelve of those are new and have opened since last year, so we are really excited to point out the exciting economic development happening in downtown. Another place you can come to get an update about that is, I hope everybody will join us on Wednesday, August third, from eight o'clock in the morning until nine o'clock at Joplin's Java at one-fourteen South Genesee Street. That's where we're doing our next monthly Members Plus meeting, where we do an update on what's going on in downtown. On August thirteenth, we are partnering with the Citizens Police Academy to do the Walkhegan Street Sale, so that's all day from nine AM to four PM on Saturday, August thirteenth. And if anybody's interested in volunteering with us to participate in that, you can check out more information at walkheganmainstreet.org or by calling our office at eight-four-seven six-two-three six-six-five-zero. And the last thing I want to mention is our next art walk, this one's free, this one is on August twentieth, and that'll be primarily down at the south end of Genesee Street, again, where we have, we will be featuring the opening of Dandelion Gallery's new location in the Merchant's Block Building, as well as a couple other new businesses that have filled spaces there that we've been able to rent out by working with property owners to show temporary art galleries there, and then eventually fill those retail spaces. So I look forward to talking with you later in the agenda and answering any of your questions about those events. Thanks.
Thank you, Violet.
That concludes our public comment time, and it kind of came to my mind, too, that during my comments, I had forgotten to give my condolences to the family of Wayne Motley and David Motley. Wayne's sister passed away last week, and our condolences go out to your family for that. We're very sorry to hear that. We'll take a motion to approve the minutes of July eighteenth, two thousand and eleven, regular meeting and executive session. Motion by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Moisio. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, thank you. Next, under resolutions and proclamations, you know, I've spoken at length at the last couple of city council meetings about the level of service and work that was done in the city of Walkhegan by Commonwealth Edison in response to the damage that was wrought upon this community by the storms that came through, and how difficult and how dangerous this work was, how closely they worked together with our Public Works, our Fire Department, our Police Department, everybody. It was just an amazing act of coordination that went on, and we're very grateful to our friends at Commonwealth Edison for what they did by coming up here and having a presence in the city hall itself, speaking directly to us so that things weren't being filtered through, you know, different, different individuals. It really went a long way to turning what should have been a multi-week power outage into a six-and-a-half or seven-day outage, because the damage was unbelievable. And what we would like to do is to have a resolution read for Commonwealth Edison for the service during the recent storm. I would take a motion to adopt the resolution by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Tempest. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it. Mr. Clerk, if you would read the resolution, please.
Whereas Commonwealth Edison provides electrical service to thirty-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-one customers in Walkhegan, and whereas the city of Walkhegan, along with many of its neighboring communities in northeast Illinois, has been significantly impacted by severe weather during two thousand and eleven, and Walkhegan suffered substantial damage to its trees and other property due to the high-speed, sustained winds during the months of June and July. And whereas many of the trees damaged by the storm caused damage to property, including homes, cars, businesses, and Commonwealth Edison Power Services. Knocking out electrical service to many Walkhegan customers, and whereas the July two thousand, July eleven-two thousand storm was particularly severe, resulting in twenty-seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-six Commonwealth Edison customers in Walkhegan and over seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand total customers experiencing power outages, some of which lasted over one-hundred-and-twenty-five hours. And whereas Commonwealth Edison, in spite of the substantial drain on its resources during such significant event, maintained constant communications with the city of Walkhegan personnel and Commonwealth Edison executives took an active role in ensuring services restoration by conducting an onsite visit and community tours with the city of Walkhegan leadership in order to see firsthand the impact, the destruction caused by the storm. And whereas Commonwealth Edison, in order to restore service to its customers as quickly as possible, brought in numerous crews and worked extensive hours and shifts, and solicited assistance from its partners from other areas, including Petco in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, Wisconsin Public Service, Kansas City Power and Light, Consumers Energy, Detroit, Michigan, Alabama Power, Georgia Power, Nippsco Power, Indiana, as well as other, others from Florida, Minnesota, and Tennessee, whose employees traveled great distances and left their families in order to restore services to Walkhegan residents and businesses. Now, therefore, the city of Walkhegan would like to express its gratitude to Commonwealth Edison for its partnership and for, for its partners, for dedication and effort demonstrated during the challenging time, and for working tirelessly to restore service to Walkhegan customers.
Diane Emerson is, is in the audience, as are a number of Commonwealth Edison employees. I'd, I'd like to have you come up front, if you wouldn't mind, and Diane, if you'd like to introduce some of the folks that are here, and if you have a, a couple of comments that you might like to make, we would certainly welcome that.
Good evening, everybody, Mayor, Alderman. And I've got several people here, it's, it wouldn't be complete if I, if I didn't bring some of our field people here, who, without them, we'd still be without lights, and I can't say enough for, for the tireless work of all of our field people. I've, I've got Bill McBride, he's our vice president of operations, and he was here tirelessly throughout the, the storm events, helping to oversee the operations, and he's in charge of our, our field people. Benita Parker is my counterpart, who actually came up here during the event, she was me here, and she, we, we actually, during the event, had people here to communicate with the city, and, and the communication becomes very key in these events. Mark Falcone was also here as a field presence. Irma Zerakoz, another person who couldn't make it here, and she wanted to thank everyone for the, the, just the kindness and support that came back from the city and, and the residents who came in during the event. And now I'm, I'm going to butcher people's names here, I know John Halseck, he's one of our foremen, because I bother him all the time on a daily basis. Tony Mahia is one of our crew.
John Appel.
John Appel. John Appel, and, and he's another one of our, our, our field people, and he's up here in Walkhegan all the time.
How much introduce yourself?
Lance O'Farrell, I, too, live in Walkhegan, so.
And, and we do have many of our employees that not only work up here, but actually live in the Walkhegan area. And who else am I missing?
Dan Carnell.
Dan Carnell. Oh, Dan Carnell. And, well, I've known for years, and I should have recognized. And, and we had just numerous people, and, and I just want to spend a second to, to really thank the, the staff of Walkhegan, the residents of Walkhegan, for the support and patience as we face the challenges that the devastating storms that hit this area, while we face those challenges to restore power during the storm. So we, we thank you. And Bill, I didn't know if you wanted to say a word or two.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and City Council, just want to thank you for the tribute, and it really goes to the guy standing behind me. They worked sixteen-hour days from that storm up until this weekend, because when we were done here, we actually shipped them down to Glenbard this past week where they got hit, so thank you for that. The other thing, and I was telling Alderman Cunningham, was, you know, I'm responsible for everything outside the city of Chicago, so I got a big service territory, but I wanted to be up here this week in this area because you were the hardest hit, so, I know I went out a couple times with you, and to a person, every person I met, every citizen, while, after a few days, it gets real frustrating, they were very understanding, and even more importantly, very considerate to myself and all the people here, so we really appreciate that. And the last thing I'll leave you with is our commitment. We're a self-critical organization, a commit, so we'll look at this, we critique every storm we have along with our daily operations. So this was a very big case study for us, so we got a lot of opportunity to learn. So we commit to you that we're not resting, that we did the best job we can do, because we think we can always improve, and so we've already developed some opportunities where we could do better in our emergency response, and even in some pocket reliability to areas up here, so we commit that to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate everything that you did for us. I think a little round of applause. So. Yeah, it was quite an effort. I mean, when you think about how much power comes out of one of those inch-and-a-half or two-inch-thick lines, and how dangerous that is, and how close that they were working with all of this, and working with our, our staff, it, it really was quite a feat, and we, we do appreciate everything you've done for us. So again, thank you for coming tonight. We will get you a suitably embossed copy of this sent out to you at your offices, so we didn't have time to prepare it for today because of some of the things that were going on over the last few days, and, but we'll get it to you. And again, thank you so much for everything that you did. We do appreciate it. We do appreciate it. Do we, anybody like to offer a quick comment or anything? Alderman Cunningham?
You know, as I think we said it last week before the Commonwealth Edison crew was here, the gentleman, the line, I guess you used to call them the line guys, what a remarkable job that they were able to do as they went out into communities and communities out watching as they tirelessly, you know, put these lines back together. And some of the things that incurred as this was happening. But I think, Mayor, what I would like to stress is the partnership, Mr. Haggerty's team working with Commonwealth Edison along with their, it was one of the most remarkable scenes, if you ever didn't get a chance to witness it, as I did up close. It was this beautiful partnership of everybody working for one common goal, and that is to get your customers, our residents, back on with power. And I might add, I was one of those residents, too, so it always helped with that. But congratulations to you. And again, what I really like to hear is this, we're looking for better ways to improve our process. That is key, not only to any operation, but to all operations. So I commend you for bringing that to you. All right? Believe me, this won't be the last time you hear from us. We got direct lines now, Mayor. Thank you, and congratulations to you again.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other comments? No? All right. Now we will move on to committee reports and motions. First up is Judiciary Committee chaired by Alderman May.
Thank you, Mayor. The Judiciary Committee met on July 25th, and the first three items on our agenda this evening are related to each other. The first item is to approve the recommendation of the Waukegan Local Redevelopment Authority regarding the reuse of the Armed Forces Research Center located at 1721 North Macquarie Road to transfer the property to Waukegan Public School District 60, an ISO move.
We have the motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Conken.
Oh, no.
No? Does not want to second that?
I'll second it.
We have the second by Alderman Rivera. This would be a roll-call item. Roll-call, please.
Your Honor, there is some, I was under the impression that this was not going to be moving forward tonight because of outstanding issues that currently existed in this. I did read the, I think this was a memo, a memorandum in reference to the Alderman's award. I know she had some concerns. I'm assuming those concerns have been met. But I think there's further discussion that needs to go on regarding this particular facility from an approval standpoint. I was under the expectation that this was going to be held over on the floor. That's the expectation that was under from committee meeting.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
After, I don't recall agreeing to hold it over. I did, we did have a second meeting following judiciary with District 60, Alderman Newsom and I. And I did individually send emails to each Alderman sitting up here with the amended resolutions. We addressed the traffic concerns in the memorandum of understanding that the school board did pass after our council meeting, our last council meeting. We met with the officials. Alderman Newsom had an opportunity to discuss not only Clearview School, but also this property, which do share a property line. We also addressed the concerns with Habitat for Humanity and the Coalition and came up with an agreement that became even more desirable as far as the issuance of the dollar properties. So we had felt we had addressed every concern that had been brought to us regarding this property.
Well, ma'am, in all due respects to you, I, it was going to stay in committee. We then said, let's bring it out so it'd be on the floor so it wouldn't have to come back to committee again. But I thought, and I'm glad that you did, you met with the Alderman of the ward, but I'm going to tell you right now, the traffic issue that currently exists, I think, throughout the city of Waukegan, when it comes to some of the schools. And Mayor, you did a fantastic job of bringing up of what pre-education is all about. I don't think pre-education is going to be interfered with because right now, pre-education will currently exist. We're just trying to, if I'm not mistaken, Dr. Batiste and the Social Superintendent of Education, of Academics, the goal is to bring that into one house. I'm assuming that's the goal, to bring that on to one house. And I have no problems with that. What I have, what I'm having problems with, or concerns, I should say problems, the word problem is wrong, with concerns with, you can't tell me today that the traffic flow in that area is going to subside. You just can't. There is not enough information or traffic study that is going to tell me you're not going to have what's going on at Brookside, you're not going to have what's going on in some of these elementary schools right now. We have a problem here. And to compound that problem by saying, let's move forward with this because it's going to unify, it's going to centralize their operations, which I really do believe is a good, from an efficiency standpoint, but we need to understand what it's going to do to the city of Waukegan. I'm telling you today, you're going to have Waukegan Police out there on a daily basis when you start bringing almost 1,000 kids, preschool kids, in buses in a centralized, it is not going to work currently as it stands. We need to have that in place before we say yes. I do believe that, and it's good to hear, that it's not going to happen until the following year. That's great. But we don't know what it is today. When we approve, when we approve any business, we always ask for what? A parking plan. When we approve a subdivision, we ask for a parking plan. We want to give compliments to parents who's going to bring their three, four-year-old child. They're not just going to drop them off and go. They're walking inside. You're going to flood that area with problems of parking. You can say what you want to say, it's going to happen. Let's address it now. And if you don't address it now, we're going to be back at this council addressing it again. And then you're going to have frustrated, frustrated parents, those who live in that area. And I'm not, I'm not here to advocate for any other war but my own, but I understand this is going to be a city problem as a whole. If they're not going to be utilizing this facility until next year, there's no need to pass it now. Let's get everything on the floor right now and then pass it. That's just my personal opinion.
Mayor, may I?
Yeah, Alderman May and then Alderman Newsom.
Alderman Cunningham, I respect your concerns. We added a paragraph, and I'm going to read it. District 60 and the city hereby agree to work in cooperation and to consult one another during the planning stages of the property's development, including without limitation, the traffic flow design, and ingress egress plans. I don't think that we can expect a traffic study and a traffic plan to be in place before they acquire the property. We're going to, they're going to spend the time and the money to do a traffic study and traffic plan before, I mean, how long is this going to take? The Department of Defense or the Department of Education is going to auction this property if we keep stalling it. That's the bottom line. We're going to be, we're going to be written out of the equation, and then it's going to go to auction.
Ma'am, that was, that was never brought to our, that was never said that this thing would have to be brought to auction if that was...
It's in the correspondence that we've received.
I'm trying to tell you what we've been told. This is the first, what do you mean it's going to be brought to auction? So if we don't make a decision tonight, are we going to lose the property? Is that what you're saying, Andy?
No, I'm not saying it's tonight.
Okay, then, help me out.
Mayor, may I ask?
I'm sorry?
I said, Mayor, may I ask, after Alderman Newsom has a chance to speak, may I ask Corporation Council, who's been working on this project with us, to come up and address Alderman Cunningham's questions?
Sure.
He can address them. I did have the opportunity to come in, which was, I have to say, my first meeting was last week with this group that was meeting in order to address my concerns. And as Alderman Cunningham has stated, there is a serious problem at Clearview School as it stands right now. I believe it is the largest pre- elementary school in the district, and the kids are bused there. And it is, when the district went back to the neighborhood schools, there are a lot of children that walk to school. So therefore, if they're within a mile and a half, I guess, they have to walk. A lot of parents don't want their children to walk to school, so they bring them. So there's a lot of cars, there's a lot of congestion. So I've met with the Police Department on occasion at that site to try to figure out what we can do to lessen the impact of the traffic that's in that area. That has been my concern, and that's still my concern in bringing the preschool or to that area. I would hope that if this is passed, and I have stated this with, at the meeting, that we work on solving that problem as soon as that property is acquired. That going into the school season in August or when school starts, that I don't get the calls that I got last year, the complaints about the kids walking, there's not enough, there's teachers that stand out there now. They take it upon themselves, they stand out there in the street to help cross the children, but they can't direct traffic. They're not supposed to be in the street directing traffic, and that's what the problem is. It's the cars and the parents, you can't tell them, you know, you can't drop your kid off. It's a problem. It's a serious problem, and I know it's not only at Clearview School, it's at a lot of the other schools, too, once we went back to the neighborhood schools. I do know if the school district acquires that property, maybe we can lessen the impact coming off Macquarie. But I don't know if that will create a problem once you have all of those buses coming through there. It's something, a study's going to have to be done. You acquire the property, something's going to have to be done as soon as you, if it's passed, that you acquire that property, some type of study or something's going to have to be done before the 2012, 2013 school season starts. But I would hope that the school district would work with the Police Department and the city to do something at that area before the school starts this year. And like I said, that's my concern. And I didn't know either that the property would go to auction. That was never told to us several years ago when this first became an issue. So maybe Corporation Council can say something about that.
I'd like to speak on that.
Alderman, your mic, please.
Yeah? Phase one, the property was supposed to be given to the city of Waukegan. City of Waukegan. All of a sudden, the mayor told the school that we don't have enough money to go ahead and develop the property. You can take it. Council said, no, we can use it, too, for our Police Department. I feel the property should, says go to auction. It says here in the, and by the way, you did a much better job in the second phase of your agreement. The first agreement with the school board, it stunk, really stunk bad. We were going to maintain everything and everything else. You know, we have four school districts in the city of Waukegan. You have Warren School District, Zion, Tuas Farms, Warren and Waukegan. We have four different school districts. The city of Waukegan, we make sure the crossing guards, we take care of that. Years ago, the different schools took care of that. School has their budget, we have our budget. The first memorandum we received, the property was going to the city of Waukegan. And the agreement was that we would come up with 15 sites for Habitat for Humanity to develop affordable housing for families that wanted to get in, we would agree. This agreement says, we don't want to own the property, we just want to give it to the school district, be assured that we can have those two buildings forever and ever until we don't want them anymore, and not control the property. Wow, it's right across from city yards. Why wouldn't we want to control the property? I know we're short of money. I know where the mayor is, in his heart where he was coming from. Money, money. Well, who says we've got to develop it right away? Who says we can't use it for just police vehicles and so forth until our budget gets turned around and we have money to, or why can't you mothball the property for a while? To me, I think the city's been very, very generous to Waukegan Public Schools, but I think we should look out for the city of Waukegan. Our budget, what our needs are. I know we have the community to think about, but how about the city of Waukegan? And therefore, I cannot support this this evening because I think it should belong to the city of Waukegan. And if it goes to public auction, we vote not to take it in, I still say we have the right to take the first agreement, not these other ones that we got going in. And I was in a meeting earlier with a gentleman from the school district, like he owned the property, just arrogant as hell, like he owned it and it was his because somebody said so. That never came through the city council. And I really believe this evening, people, turn this down and vote to take sole ownership of it and work with what we can until we can get it up and running. And that's my opinion, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Sure. Alderman Rivera.
Your, when you say you let it go to auction, let's let it go to auction. Well, you know what? Anyone can bid for it. What if they want to put residential there? You don't think you're going to still have the same traffic problems? Absolutely. Absolutely. So we have a building there. Education, we all support education. I think it's important that we support it. Yes, there's going to be some traffic problems, but the chair of the Judiciary Committee met with these groups along with Alderman Newsom. They all came to an agreement. Also Habitat was, of Humanity was there. They all came to an agreement. I think this could be worked out. But we here as a council, I hope we're supporting education. I think this is, I'm looking at, and that's the reason why I seconded, because I'm looking at this as what fits, what could fit there. That can fit there. It's a better fit. But to say, okay, let's not give it, let's not, let's go to the auction, I think that's the wrong way to go. I think we can take care of these transportation problems. The traffic problems, I think we can, I know we can come to an agreement to fix these issues. I would just like to see, you know, if the school district has, do we have any pre-plans or have we seen any, any plans in regards to what this is going to look like if you did purchase it? You know, I'd like to see what's, you know, the pre-planning on this. I've never, you know, seen any, any plans on it, but I think that's important for us to see.
Dr. Batiste or Dr. Lampkin, would you like to address that question in any way whatsoever, as how the building will change if it comes into the school district's hands in any way? Because it's my understanding that the general building is going to stay as it is, the shape of it anyway. It's the internal configuration that will be worked on.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Danaldo Batiste, Superintendent of Schools. The only plan that we have right now is for the renovation of the building to make it customizable for the pre-K population that we're hoping to be able to house there. As of last week, when we learned about the desire of the council to address the ingress and egress of the property, we started talking about the need to perhaps do a further study to determine what it will entail to ensure that a road or turnaround point would be a part of the premises so as to minimize the congestion that has been alluded to about other areas near schools within the community. The only thing that I'd like the community and the members of the community to understand is that children are, in fact, a viable part of the community. Where there are children, there is a city. And of course, if we're not here to look out for them, the question, it becomes who? And that's why we are interested in the preservation of the property because, as Alderman Cunningham alluded to tonight, certainly we do have preschool education here, and it's preschool for all, as a matter of fact. And we would just award it the complete grant in its entirety as we asked for because Waukegan is one of the neediest areas in the state of Illinois. Waukegan is one of the neediest areas in the state of Illinois in the provision of quality preschool education. Now, there were other competitors who applied for that same grant, but we were able to show the proof in the pudding, and we got the exact amount that we asked for. So I think that that is yet another commitment on behalf of the school district, that we are putting our monies where our mouth is, because we believe that our future is in fact built upon strong residents who have, as the mayor was so apt to point out tonight, where we provide education at the earliest possible convenience, we begin to see the biggest return on our investment in them. I have with me tonight Dr. Mary Lamping, our chief academic officer, and she would be able to tell you in greater detail what some of those modifications to the building will entail. District 60 has, with its budget, optimized its budget to include monies that have been set aside for the immediate renovation, such that the properties would become inhabitable during the 2012, 13 school year. Dr. Mary Lamping?
Thank you. The only thing I would add to Dr. Batiste's comments is that the population we are serving currently in the pre-K is not the need. We have, we service about 740 students right now, the grant we just wrote for is 840, but we have a waiting list beyond that. So, we have a growing population that needs services at that young age. The renovations to the building itself are basically walls and structures to be able to house 20 students in a classroom. That's a requirement of the pre-K grant. We did receive that grant at $3.4 million for the exact amount we wrote for, so we're very pleased with that. But most of them are structural in terms of building classroom spaces. That means taking out a wall, or expanding and stretching a room to be able to fit that size. Basically, the building's in very good condition, as I, I know you know, but it's basically making room for approximately 17 classrooms.
I have a question, ma'am. You wrote that grant on the come, so to speak, that you're gonna get this building, and that, that's what you're gonna use it for, correct? The monetary?
We wrote, we currently have a pre-K program, but we did wish to increase our population in that, so we wrote to try to increase. If we don't get the building, we may have to give a portion of that money back, because we are at capacity, we're at, we're at.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, I just wanna say one thing about...
I have a question.
Yeah, just, just, I wanna make, while I, while I have it on my...
While you're here, what method of reading instruction do you use for elementary school children?
What, what method of reading instruction?
Right.
I mean, we have a balanced literacy program, but we use open court is our primary curriculum for our elementary students.
For first graders, I mean, what, what do you use to teach them how to read? I'm curious.
This is pre-K.
This is pre-K.
It's pre-K.
Three, three...
While she's here, I'm just asking a quick question. What method of reading instruction do you employ?
We do a balanced literacy program, we use open court, so we have direct instruction, we have small groups, we do independent reading with our students, but it's a combination, it's not just a straight lecture style.
Do you use phonics at all?
There's always phonics embedded in the program, but it's not pure phonics and only phonics, but it's embedded in the program.
The reason I ask, by your own statistics, that children by eighth grade are typically two grade levels below reading comprehension?
We have a number of students that are below in reading, but we also have a very high ELL population, especially at the lower levels, so that does impact our reading scores.
I asked you, I think a couple of years ago, about Dr. Hersch's core knowledge foundation, or core knowledge curriculum? Very successful. I wish our school district would employ that, because it works everywhere, they're using it in some test schools in New York City right now. They're far and above what they use in the, the regular elementary schools. I, I don't understand why we can't use that here. Because if we don't use that, I don't know where we're gonna go with, how, how is pre-K gonna make any difference?
Well, I, I think, I think those are things, as a council, maybe we wanna go to the school board meeting and really address those. I know the Alderman has some great...
I apologize.
I know the Alderman has some great...
I've had a hard time getting that answered, and now I haven't. We don't use phonics in our elementary schools.
Not as the core, but, you know, I, I did wanna say something, and then Alderman Moiseo. From the first day that I came into office, it was always my understanding that this situation was one where, that if this, if the city of Waukegan did not have a use that would go into play right away for this building, that it would then go up for auction. From, from the very beginning of this process, I, I believed that to be the case, and was told that. And then, the issue of how the school district came into the process, actually, I received a call from the Department of Education, and then followed by a call from the Department of Defense, stating that they were both interested in having this building move into an education use if the city of Waukegan was not going to be able to commit to being able to put this building into play right away. We were not going to be allowed to mothball it. And that is my understanding from what I've read of the, the literature that I've gotten, looking back and having talked to, you know, the chief and others about this from the, you know, how this whole thing began, that that was on the table from the very beginning. And this, this isn't something that we're sneaking on anybody, it was part of the, the package from day one. Now, if I'm mistaken, it may possibly be, but I was told that that was, that was how it was set up.
It was part of the, when we sent out the two new MOUs, there was a cover letter by Amy Stregge addressing that fact directly.
Well, three years ago, it wasn't.
Right, I, I understand.
Well, I, and I can't account...
It's been my understanding since I've been on this council in this very short time.
And if I, if I could say, I cannot account for what was told to you three years ago. I, I cannot speak to that. But it's been my understanding since I've walked into the process that that was the setup. We didn't just make a rash decision, we looked at this from a very, well, we looked at it from a, just strictly a financial standpoint, of what would be, we be able to do with this building? What did we have money to do with it? And the truth of it is, there, there's no money available to use in this building. I think that one of my goals from getting the old city hall repaired, and getting the HVAC system and the roof fixed, was to have the police department expand out into those facilities, and to give themselves more room, both storage and workspace, and that's why we really moved forward with that, in, in making that investment in that building. So, Alderman Moiseo, please. Sorry to hold you.
No, I'll have to pass on this from my point with the school district, but we need to think, I, I tried to champion this a long time ago, when Mark Hawn was on the board, I talked to him about it. The bottom line is the school district's landlocked. They don't have any land. The district boundaries are landlocked, there's nowhere they can buy any land and build a school. They have preschool and churches, because they don't have anywhere to put them. That may have changed, but Waukegan School District does not have any money to build a school. They probably aren't in foreseeable future. I hope they're not gonna raise property taxes, or go off, they're not gonna go off for a referendum, not in this climate, to build a school. They don't, they don't have it. No one has it. So in my mind, the best use of this land is for, to be a school. Pre-K, I'm not so hot on that, but that's above my pay grade in District 60. I'm just a teacher, not a decision-maker on that. But it's the best use of the land, because the school district is landlocked, there's no other place it can go to build a school. I mean, they had to build a junior high in a city square block. That's a catastrophe, but it's all the land they could find in their district. So we have to, I think, think about things like that, when things like this come across to our table, and how we can work together for a better community. Thank you.
Call for the question.
I have comments.
Okay, that's Alderman Conken.
Thank you. Just to make a few comments, you know, back when I was growing up, the pre-K was always the responsibility of the parents. And I understand that the school district was chartered for K through 12. Why they wanted to get into the pre-K business, I'm not exactly sure why. I do agree, and I believe that the studies that the mayor mentioned in earlier in his comments probably indicate exactly what he says, that pre-K does, the earlier you get to the kids, the better off they are. I understand that. The issues I have are in deference to the police leadership. I understand that they say that they are also, the mayor's comments also stated, they said they are in favor of it. I've talked to a number of police officers themselves, they disagree. They actually came up to me and told me the other thing, they want that building. They want it for a training area, they want it for training purposes. So, I'm sorry, Chief, but I, I know that you work for the mayor, and I understand you work with the budgets, and the officers don't, but I also understand the needs of the officers. That's something that they say they want. My other comments are, with the deal that Alderman Tempest brought up, about us giving 15 properties away for the access to this property, we have given away five already. And whether we get this property or not, or whether it goes to the school district, we're still on the hook for 10 extra properties. And I've got a problem with that, giving away properties and getting nothing in return, even if the properties are minimal cost to the city of Waukegan. I'm sorry, but I'm also of position, I will not support this, giving it to the school district. I'm sorry, I also mentioned, like Alderman Moiseo has just said, that putting all the pre-K in one spot may not be the answer. If that were to become a school, and that would lessen the loads on some of the other schools in the area, and make a pre-K in each of those schools more accessible, that would be one thing. But to combine them all in one spot, I'm sorry, I don't know that that's a situation that would be appropriate for that building.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman.
Your Honor, one question was not addressed, the drop dead date. What is the drop dead date from this auction thing that we must do tonight? Does anyone know the drop dead date?
Sergeant Boffer.
Alderman Cunningham, that's a real good question. My contact with the Army has indicated that the Army is not interested in keeping that place heated this coming winter. He assured me that if that were to be the case, they would solicit the GSA to dispose the property through auction.
Okay, so, and that doesn't make sense. So, in essence, they don't want to be ensuring this, or doing anything with this property over the winter. So this is August, September, October.
Okay.
If we, if we came in and said that we would, or the school district, and I wanna be very clear, I'm in favor of the school district having this property. I'm in favor of pre-edu, what they call, pre-education, is it pre-education, or early childhood education? I'm in favor of those, and I think everybody up here is in favor. This is not an anti, not wanting early childhood education. As far as I'm concerned, I need to have a better understanding of, of this traffic flow, and, and all due respects to everybody up here, whether you're new or old or indifference. Fact is, there were certain things said to us that may not have been communicated to you, I'm going on what I know and what I know now. What I know now, never heard of a drop dead date, never heard we had to give it to somebody, this was not heard of. So now that we have those facts now, I think we should make decisions based on those facts now. But don't tell me that this was part of it was, and this is what I knew when I got here. I'm telling you what I knew today, and I'm making decisions on that today. So, and, and, and in respect to what the school district leads, and what all the labor everybody's put into this, I'm hoping, school district, Mr. President, Superintendent, that we come back with a viable parking solution for that area. Because I promise you, you come back and this thing happens, and these folks start beating us up up here, I'm, I'm marching them right over to the public school district, and we're gonna dance at your, at your house. Because no one understands about this traffic stuff until it comes to your neighborhood. When it gets to your neighborhood, that's when it becomes an issue. And that's where I am a little bit more passionate about it, because I was on at Carmen School when those neighborhoods went in, and there was nobody there to direct people what was going on. I had to call the police chief, I had to call other people, we had teachers out there. I'm not gonna go through that again. I'm telling you, I'm not going through that again. And then, there was no one to say, who's in charge? That was wrong, for that to happen, and now you, you about to dump, I shouldn't say dump, we're about to now move all of these kids to one area? I'm telling you, that is a disaster unless we know how to properly plan for it. And if we don't, shame on us. So if we wanna move on, move on, but I'm, I'ma vote my conscience, and I'm telling you exactly what I knew, and I'm making decisions on what I knew then, and how, how I'm going to make a vote now. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman.
Mr. Mayor, my second request, call for the question, sir.
I'd like one more chance.
Go ahead. I'll yield.
I apologize.
It's all right, I'll yield.
I'd like to make one more chance. The preschool is mandatory busing. Obviously, there will still be parents entering and leaving this property, but the majority of the children are bought, brought through with busing. Number two on traffic, we believe, and I believe everyone at that meeting, including the Alderman of the ward, believes that the, the fact that Clearview School and this property are conjoined, and will have access out to Macquarie Road, it's going to improve the situation for both of the schools. In the MOU, we have assurances from the school district that they are going to work with the city on the traffic plan. And then I'd like to address Alderman Conken's comments on the memorandum, because this is number three on the agenda. As far as the Habitat agreement, we've already given five. We get these properties for a dollar, we turn them over to an organization that helps low-income housing in our community. They have agreed, over the next five years, for every three properties that we offer them, if they, every three properties that they refuse, it's going to count as one. In that MOU that you received in your email last week, the memorandum says, for every three properties that they refuse, they will take it as one.
Are you saying that we're gonna show them 30 properties they don't want, so we're off the hook?
We have a list of the current properties available, and those lists do pertain to this agreement, to that portion of the paragraph. So if they refuse those six properties, there's two properties right there. And at the end of five years, if we have not transferred 10 more properties to Habitat, it's over. We have no more obligation. I think it's a win-win. It's for this, we are, we have the ability to acquire properties for $1, and we hand them over to an organization that helps them, get them back on the tax rolls, puts families in them, and we get to collect a tax bill again. I think it's a win-win.
I'd like to make one other comment also, if I may.
All right.
And this is something that I heard, and I couldn't believe I heard it when I did. And it was from what I assume is an extremely well-educated man at the school district. And he said that the pre-K program costs the taxpayer nothing, because they get the money from the state. How does the state get their money? They get it from the taxpayer. So for him to make that comment, an educated man to make that comment, I found it unbelievable. And I just wanted to make sure that that's the, that everybody knows, that when they see their tax bill, and they're asking about how high it is at the schools, to please go to the school district. Because I can't answer for them, because the school district does not report to the city at all. And I wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. And we have the request to call the question by Alderman Valco. I will recognize that, a request to call the question, and we will go forward with the roll call vote, please.
I'd like to hold the matter over.
Can I, can I make a, can, are you gonna change your, may I speak?
You can make a motion to...
Alderman Tempest, with all due respect, you've indicated that your mind is made up. We've talked about this...
Yes, my mind is made up.
So why are we gonna hold it over?
If I may answer you, if I may answer the Alderman from the 7th Ward, my mind is somewhat made up. I have some serious problems. Number one, the original form that we received, said the property, if we did this, gave 15, would go to the city of Waukegan to be used by their police department. Then, we got, somebody told the school board, go ahead and take the property, the city doesn't really want it. Maybe Sergeant DeBoffer can, can clarify that. Was the first agreement that we were gonna take the whole, whole property? May I speak, may?
We'll see.
Yes, Sir Alderman Tempest, the prior members of the local redevelopment authority consisted of Mayor Hyde, a representative from Nikasa, and Ray Vukovich, as well as Chief Bian. At that time, that draft MOU was presented to the council, and the council approved it. Consequently, that...
And that draft said what?
That draft said we would give fifteen properties in exchange for the Coalition and Habitat to remove their notice of interest, or withdraw their notice of interest, and...
And we'd have complete control?
Yes, Sir.
That's my point I'm trying to make. That's the point I'm trying to make. And what, is there anything saying that we had to give all the buildings, get going right away?
We have to begin using the facility for law enforcement-related purposes.
Okay, well, we could use the property by parking a vehicle. I mean, what I'm trying to, my message I'm trying to get, is we had a chance to get the property, use it for our police department, who's been shortchanged, but the mayor did say he's getting city hall for him, so we have a compromise there. A chance to get that property adjacent to City Arts. We wouldn't put that much traffic in it compared to what the school district would put in it. We're a different taxing body. We are a different taxing body. You know? I'm a firm believer in kindergarten through twelve. But now we got a new state mandate, pre-kindergarten. I don't see what that is in the Constitution. Yes, it's a great idea, there's different programs on that, but gosh, we have enough financial problems with our school district with K through twelve. And salaries have gotten out of line there. You know?
Mayor, if I may, sir.
It just bothers me, I just think this council should realize, because they're getting the idea, it's gonna go to auction. Wait a minute, we still have the opportunity to take the property ourselves. We don't need a partner. But then, if you read real carefully, I love to read, it says that we have no intention to really own the property, but we want these two buildings to be able to use, you know, but, and the school says, oh, fine, fine. Take the, we'll take the whole deed, but we'll make this agreement that the police department can use the two outbuildings. I, that's what I'm reading. But you will continue, city, to find ten more units, as Lisa described very well. You know, I don't get it, I really don't. Why wouldn't we want the property?
Alderman Valco.
Police guys want it.
Sergeant, I might...
I have to hold the matter over so the council can think about it.
Okay, let's wait and see where that falls for a moment, if we could, please.
Sergeant, I might correct that the original estimate, if we keep the building, is two million dollars to renovate it.
We had an architectural and engineering study performed on that site last June, and it was 1.7 million dollars to refurbish it to the required specifications for what the police department intended to use it for.
Okay. And in your estimation, that when we give the property, if we give the property back over to the school board and we rent, we get building two and three, who's the winner in this?
Well, I can't make that determination, sir.
Would the police department be a winner in this, for getting those, the buildings two and three?
Well, I think any additional space that we can acquire without cost is a win.
That's what I'm looking for. Thank you, sir.
Oh, thank you Sergeant. You know, there's one thing I want to, if I, if I could, that I think we're missing here is, one, the Department of Defense, the federal government, is the most well-funded entity in the world. In the world. They are saying to the taxpayers, we cannot afford to continue to maintain this building, which means heat, water, electricity, all of that. We have to remember that every department has a budget. And that budget includes their facilities' costs. If we take this building, the facility costs will come out of the department of the Waukegan Police Department's budget. We are already, right now, razor-thin, or less, on our budgets, and our ability to make sure that we have as many policemen working for this city as we possibly can. But what will happen if this building is taken into our ownership, is that the cost of maintaining the building, heating it during the winter, keeping water in the pipes so they don't freeze, having somebody going and maintaining security on the building, will probably cost us at least one or two officers, if not more. This, I felt, was the best compromise for the city of Waukegan and for the police department. I think, Alderman Conken, if you were to ask those officers, what's more important, the building or the jobs of their colleagues, I really honestly think that they probably would prefer to keep more officers on than they would to be able, as far as heating the building and having water and those electric costs.
My question to that would be, maybe Officer, Sergeant DeBolfer, you could answer this, is there a requirement that officers inhabit that building, or that it's just used by the police department? In other words, could the building be winterized, have the pipes drained, have the heaters turned off, used for storage? And hang onto that property till such time that we could have the money in our budgets necessary to do the renovations? Or is it required to be occupied immediately?
There's no requirement to staff the building, we could use it for storage. The average annual utility costs while the Army and the Marines occupied the building was seventy thousand dollars.
How much?
Seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand for that?
Just for storage? Just to, is that including heat and electricity, everything else?
Yes, Sir. The, there's two boilers in that building, one is...
Could they be shut down? Could that building be winterized and used strictly for storage? And if not, why not?
Depends on what you're storing in there. If it's...
That's what I'm talking, you know, in other words, if you wanted to use the armory in there, or the vault, for weapons storage, would that need to be heated and cooled?
No.
Evidence, would that need to be heated and cooled, depending on the evidence?
Yes, it'd need to be climate-controlled, to prevent any, any arguments in court as to the condition of the storage facility.
Okay, that, well, that answers my question. In other words, you're telling me that we could acquire the property, use it for basic requirements for the police, in other words, vehicles could be stored there?
Certainly.
On the property?
Yes, Sir.
And then we could hang onto that property until such time as the budgets allowed us to renovate it for use at some time in the future?
Yes, Sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you Sergeant.
I'd like to ask the question, what, at what point do you think our budget, and when we do have a, when our budget is on the upswing, is this what we're gonna want to use it, the first million and a half or two million dollars, and it's gonna just rise as time goes on? Is this the highest and best use of this property? That we're gonna mothball this building, rather than allow our school district that serves our citizens, that we're here to represent? That that's the highest and best use of this facility? I'm just confused by this.
Mayor, if I could make one more...
Alderman Rivera, and then I think what we're going to...
First of all, I've heard both sides of the argument here. Sorry, I'm having cramps. Our argument, in my opinion, is weak. We don't have the money to purchase this place. What, if we do purchase it, what are we gonna do with it? From what I heard from the school district, they have a solid argument. Solid. It's a no-brainer. Our mentality is, and this is, this is my opinion, if we can't get it, nobody will get it. So, I don't think that's, you know, that's, that's effective. You know, we, we all support education, there's a need, they've already explained that. The Chair and the Judiciary Committee met with the people, the Alderman met with the, with the people that's all involved in this. You know, I think we should move on. And to have it hold, hold over, I think, you know, if you want to vote, just vote against it, just vote no. But to hold it over, give, you know, you gotta, give me a good reason to hold it over, other than saying that you, you know...
Argument, Alderman prerogative.
Well, Alderman, you know what, we've, we've had quite a discussion on this, and I will say that Alderman Conken, you know, your question was very well put, but I will tell you that without a representative from the Department of Defense actually sitting in here, to my ears, what you described is a basic process for mothballing a building. Whether you've got a few cases of evidence in there or not, you're mothballing the building, you're not putting it into active use. So, I, I'm concerned that it'll be interpreted as that. But what we could do this evening, and this is something that is, I don't know that's been done in the past, I, there is the possibility of overriding the request to hold this over by a two-thirds vote of the Alderman present this evening.
I'd like to...
Yes, Alderman Newsom, please.
As Alderman of the ward, I would like to say that, I know I believe that all the Aldermen up here have made up their minds on how they're gonna vote. I've expressed my concern about this property. And it's not gonna be 2012 or 2013 when I start getting the calls. I'll start getting them again in August. My concern, like I said, has been the traffic, and I would hope that I would be involved, should this pass the council, that I would be involved with your plans for your traffic, not in 2012 and 2013, but now, before the school year starts, because first day of school, I'm gonna start getting those calls, because that's when the parents are gonna be taking those kids mostly, and then in the wintertime, when there's snow in the banks, and, and the kids gotta walk in the street, and no plan. So, I would like to be involved with that. And I think that this property, we're not able to acquire it and make use of it right now. And I think the plan for preschool, there's children already there, so if they're gonna be somewhere, they'll be where the other children are anyway. And the other thing is, to the school district, should this override hold two weeks? Is that a problem? Would that hold up any, anything for you, if it doesn't pass the council tonight?
Mayor. Alderman, just a moment, I'm not sure if Alderman Newsom's done yet.
They, they gave me the answer.
They gave you an answer. Okay, which was, if I could, just for the record, that they did acknowledge in the positive that the two, a two-week delay would not be detrimental to their plans. Alderman Tempest, please.
You know, Mayor, I know I have three votes to stop the vote tonight. Aldermen develop strong unions, we've been here a long time. However, I will withdraw my, my motion to hold it over. But I ask each Alderman to realize, you're giving up control of the property, if you vote for it. You have the opportunity to control this property. You're a different taxing body than the school. Yes, we want to help our school, but they have a tax base, and we have our tax base. We need to look out for the city of Waukegan. Yes, educationally, yes. Police department, yes. Police department's been short-changed for a long time on facilities. Believe me, I've been here a long time. They've been short-changed. That's why I'm so passionate about this. But if they realize they have the opportunity, when you're voting tonight, to control this property, or you're giving up control to the school board, and you're gonna take two buildings until the time comes somewhere down the future, the school wants the whole property, and will probably be good guys and say, okay. But I withdraw, Mayor. And thank you for your opinion.
Yes, Sir.
Thank you Alderman Tempest.
We have the, we have the motion to call the question by Alderman Valco, the request to call the question.
Yeah, thank you Alderman Tempest for withdrawing your, your holdover. Thank you very much.
You have done so.
I don't think, and I'm disappointed, Mayor, that you would even consider even entertain the thought of having this council vote against another Alderman over the holdover. That is a right of an Alderman. We do it, and we do it with respect of each other. Thank you Alderman Tempest for hold, for take, withdrawing your holdover. Thank you very much. That's a senior Alderman on council floor speaking. For unity on this council.
Thank you Alderman. So, we have the question called. We need a question called, the question was, we need a second on the call, the call the question, I believe?
Yes, second. Reverse second. Reverse second.
We've got that. Okay, so we have the motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Rivera, to approve item A. Roll call, please.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
I am voting with the Alderman of the ward, because these are her wishes, and her wishes only.
Alderman Conken.
No.
Alderman Moiseo.
On advice of council, I pass.
Passed, therefore item A passes. Item B.
To adopt a memorandum of understanding as presented with Waukegan Public School District 60, related to the Armed Forces Research Center located at 1721 Macquarie Road in ISO move.
Motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
No.
Alderman Moiseo.
On the advice of council, I pass.
Eyes have it. Thank you. Item C.
Next, to adopt a memorandum of understanding as presented with Habitat for Humanity, Lake County, and the Lake County Coalition for the Homeless, related to the Armed Forces Research Center located at 1721 North Macquarie Road in ISO move.
Motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Rivera. Roll call, please.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
No.
Alderman Moiseo.
On the advice of council, I pass.
Eyes have it. Thank you. Item D.
Next, we have a motion to adopt, as presented, an ordinance to approve zoning calendar number 2351 Larson Marine Service for the conditional use permit for the downtown lakefront overlay district in ISO move.
Motion by Alderman May. Whose ward is this then? Is this yours, Alderman Tempest?
Alderman Tempest.
Seconded by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
No.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you. Item E.
To have Corporation Council draft an ordinance to approve Blanchard Road dedication of right of way, an ISO move.
Motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Valco. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Wait, this is that, this is F?
To draft.
Draft.
No.
It's E.
E.
Yes. Instructions to draft. We have asked all in favor, opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you.
Finally, we have a motion to approve the COMEd signed license agreement, an ISO move.
Motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Moiseo.
No, 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 no.
No, 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 no. Okay, motion by, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please.
Alderman Beedling.
I pass.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Pass?
Aye.
Aye, I'm sorry, okay. Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
No.
Eyes have it. Thank you. That concludes the evening's business for Judiciary Committee. That concludes the evening's business for Judiciary Committee. Next up is Alderman Conkin and Public Safety.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Public Safety Committee met, and it was, I was a little late, so it was chaired by Alderman Rivera. Would you please take care of this, Alderman Rivera?
Very well. Item A, enter into a memorandum of understanding with the county of Lake granting $10,921 of the joint award of $46,434 from the 2011 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program Award to the county of Lake, and $35,513 to the city of Waukegan, and ISO move.
We have the motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Conkin. Roll call, please.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
Item B, waive the bid procedure and purchase through the State of Illinois Joint Purchasing Program. Contract number PSD4016788, up to six 2011 Chevrolet Impala Police Pursuit Sedans and Equipment from Green Chevrolet Incorporated, 1700 West Morton Jacksonville, Illinois, 62650, for an amount not to exceed $130,000. Now, this money is funded by the 292 slash prisoner review slash DUI SB 740 fund of the police department. Through the DUIs and tickets, and they've built up, you know, funds specifically that is only earmarked for things like this, for purchases like this. So ISO move.
We have the motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Conkin. Roll call, please.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
Item C, waive the bid procedure for the purchase and installation of equipment for these six 2011 Chevrolet Impala Police Pursuit Inceptor squads from Havy Communications, 28835 Hurricane Drive, number 117, Lake Bluff, Illinois, 60044, for an amount not to exceed $40,000. And ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Conkin. Roll call, please.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
Item D, honorary naming street for former Alderman Lucius Copeland, which, he was in the first ward, which Alderman Cunningham is sponsoring this. Alderman Cunningham, if you'd like to speak to this.
Yes, Ninth, at the corner of Ninth and MLK, in Lennox and NLK. Mr. Copeland, as many of you know, served as alderman on the city of Waukegan for several years, but Mr. Copeland has been a pillar, and I think on the south side of Waukegan as a whole, his entire life, he and his wife Catherine, where they practically just kinda nurtured me my first four years as alderman. And what he's been able to give to the city of Waukegan, and to make the Copeland family just an honorable name in this city, I thought it was well-deserved that we do, at the corner of Ninth and MLK, in Lennox and MLK, an honorary street sign for him. And I second the motion from...
Well, why don't we take the motion from you, Alderman Cunningham, and then take the second one from Alderman Rivera?
Or Baylen Art School.
Or Alderman Conkin. How's that? Yeah. That's a unique trick, but, motion by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Conkin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Sam, do we have a date on that yet?
No, I'll work with the clerk to get all that together.
Okay. Okay. We'll make sure that we get it on our website, and we'll do a press release to make sure everyone knows, just like we have for all the other street namings we've done, so it gets out there.
And then the last item, Mayor, is information only from the police department. The public auction of seized property. The proceeds from the auction held on June 4th, 2011, were $5,797.62, and the check has been deposited in the general fund. And that concludes the public safety.
Chief, we didn't put any subwoofers back out on the street, did we?
No.
Oh, guys, that's the only thing. I wouldn't want, yeah, that's just like just releasing instruments of torture back out into the community. That's great. Thank you very much, Alderman Rivera, for taking Public Safety Committee, and thank you, Alderman Conkin. Economic Development Committee, Alderman Rivera.
Mayor, the Economic Development Committee met today at 6 o'clock, and, excuse me, and then the first item on the agenda was the approval of the Genesee Theater budget for current fiscal year, May 1st through, 2011 through April 30th, 2012. We have given the budget to Gary Zabinski, and we have yet to hear his counter-budget proposal and his, the issues that we talked about, in terms of, you know, the budget and where he needs to come down a little bit. We haven't had anything, so that's still in committee.
Okay.
New business, 4.1, approval of contribution to Waukegan Main Street, any amount of $20,000 from line item 100-103024639, which is out of the mayor's office. Before we vote on this, you know, first of all, I wanna commend Violet and the rest of the committee. The leadership there has been outstanding these last, since they've been there, and I'd like to say that they have a mission. There's no question about it, an agenda, to see not only the city move forward, but to celebrate the incredible community, business community that already exists downtown. And their objective is also, just like ours, is to enhance the economic growth in the downtown area. And they're doing an outstanding job. They just had their art stroll the other day, and it was a huge success. They have many more events planned. You know, they're very proactive, and if we don't support an organization like Main Street, then we have, we have something wrong with us. The money is worth it, and they're doing an outstanding job. An ISO move.
We have the motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman May. Roll call, please.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome. Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you. Now we, Alderman Rivera, was that it for your committee, sir?
Yes, yes, that's it.
Thank you very much. Now we go to old business. Item A, which was a motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Newsome, to adopt a resolution supporting casino gambling. I'm not sure... Yeah, I'm not sure about that language in that one, whether they, that actually, I'm not sure about that. I know that Alderman Tempest did ask to hold it over.
I asked to hold it over, and I said, well, then I said, I believe, Your Honor, I said, well, you make a motion, we can hold it over, no matter we want it held over.
Right.
But, so I guess it came out in the minutes, that was the motion that was held over.
Yeah, and that's, I think that's just semantic, so I think where we are at this point, though, is moving forward on the resolution. And at this point, then I would take a motion by Alderman Rivera, if I could, seconded by Alderman Valco, to adopt the resolution supporting casino gambling. And as we have laid out before, I, we are putting a packet together that is a direct reflection of your rec, of what you said during that special call meeting that we had, and then it's gonna be put into a little bit more of a concise form, and it will be sent to the appropriate governor staffers. And as I said before, my thoughts on this are not going along with that, because I've said all along, basically, my stance is pretty well-known, and that I felt it was appropriate for the voice of the city council to be heard on this in equal, if not greater, volume, I guess, because of your greater numbers. I'm sorry, someone had their hand up. Alderman Moizio, no, you're okay?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Alderman Conkin.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanna make a comment. I'm hoping that we get to see this resolution before it gets sent down.
Oh, sure.
We will?
Absolutely. Sure. It takes, it's taking a long time to...
It's in the packet.
It is in the packet tonight.
Yeah.
I wasn't aware of that, I'm sorry. You have it. So if you could all read it and be prepared, we may, you know, let us know to make sure that you're, I mean, what we did is we took the audio recording and just wrote it down, and then, you know, kind of concisely packaged, squeezed it all down for a cover letter, or that's going to be done. But we'll share, what you haven't seen, you will see before it goes out, I promise you that. But it, so as long as we all understand that?
Yeah, well, I don't worry.
Okay? Good. I was not aware, I apologize, I was not made aware that it was in the packet tonight, so that's, so we're set on that, then. We just do a...
Call for the question.
It's a resolution.
Can we vote?
Just a voice vote, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nays.
Two nays, we have seven ayes, so the ayes have it, and this will be going out once we get the cover letter done, that gets to you via an email attachment. Do me a favor, as soon as you get it, let us know right away of any potential changes that are necessary. Yes, sir, Alderman?
Would you let the record show that I voted?
Yes, Alderman Tempest and Alderman Newsome were the two negative votes on this, just so the record reflects that, in case the audio recording is not clear on that, so, great. Under Reports and Communications, do we have anything today? No, we go to new business and recommended actions by Corporation Council. Item A, approve the payroll dated July 27th, 2011, the amount of $1,285,434.56. We have the motion by Alderman Newsome, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you. Item B, approve bills dated August 1st, 2011, in the amount of $1,832,806.21. The motion by Alderman Newsome, seconded by Alderman May. Roll call, please.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you. Under Ordinances and Resolutions, item...
Block parties.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I so move.
Do we have any block parties to, parties, potties, parties to?
We always have them.
Okay. A motion to approve by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Newsome. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, I apologize for that. Ordinances and Resolutions, item A, ordinance granting the conditional use permit for a daycare center at 1208-1212 Grand Avenue. Whose ward is this in?
Mine.
We have a motion by Alderman Newsome, seconded by Alderman May, to approve. Roll call, please.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
The ayes have it. Thank you. Before we go into Alderman's time, I want everybody to know that we will have an executive session following Alderman's time, and in essence, we'll come back out and just end the meeting, there'll be no further business before us at that point. So, once we are finished with Alderman's time, for, in essence, the meeting has concluded for the evening, so, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Beedling. I don't have much to say, but I would like to say thank you to Chief Greathouse. I think his management of the police department is very good. I like the neighborhood policeman, Art Flores, my fourth ward neighborhood policeman, top-notch, very enthusiastic, hard-working individual, and, once again, I really appreciate the night shift police, and I'm sure the day shift, they're working just as hard, but I get out on my bicycle quite often at nighttime, and I ride my bike around the ward. The chief was kind enough to let me have a police radio, and that helps a lot, and I'm extremely grateful for my police department. Thank you very much, Chief.
Alderman Newsome.
Yes, I'd like to thank Tom Haggerty for the speed in getting a lot of the brush picked up. I know you said that you were gonna be going from east to west. Well, I'm seeing it in the fifth ward now, so I'm thankful, and I know a lot of the residents that have been waiting for several weeks, they're happy as well, that you're getting, that they're seeing some of it taken care of. And I know that you'll get through, you know, it's gonna take a while, but, you know, we're I asked to corporation counsel with regards to volunteers, residents that wanted to help. Is there a, a legal issue with that, or how would they go about doing that? And also, the question was opposed to me, whether you, uh, could use people that were, um, supposed to do community service. Can we use them out there to help? You know, if they have hours that they have to do in community service, can they do that?
Alderman, uh, to respond to your question, sort of top, top of the head, uh, the use of volunteers by the city, um, would probably raise at least two issues that aren't necessarily, uh, insurmountable, but that have to be addressed. One, of course, is indemnity issue, is if somebody would get hurt, or how the, how they would handle an injury to a volunteer. We have to think that through. Uh, the other would be whether we would be running afoul of any union contracts. Uh, as we know, we've run into this issue before, so we have to take a hard look at that probably through our, uh, labor lawyer, to make sure that we wouldn't be running afoul of something that we've committed to, uh, in writing. In terms of the, uh, community service, uh, that would probably be, if that were possible, that would maybe solve some of those problems, I don't know. Um, I know a lot of times it usually goes through some sort of, uh, nonprofits, who keeps tabs on the hours, et cetera.
Right, the hours.
So, whether that would work for us in our situation, I don't know. We can certainly look into it.
Yeah, it would be free, of course, to the city, you know?
Really?
The city wouldn't have to pay anything, so, that was my question. Um, that's, oh, I had an opportunity to, uh, attend a block party in my ward over on Sherman Avenue this weekend, and I would like to encourage the residents to have block parties. It was very well put together, one of the best that I've been to. All the neighbors came together into one, uh, neighbor's yard, and, I mean, they had the grills, the tents, and everything, bouncy house for the kids, so, I would like to encourage all those that are out there that are thinking about it. I know some of, um, my residents have thought about having one, but couldn't get the neighbors to come together. I would encourage them to do so. Uh, it, it's a way of getting to know your neighbors, and once you get to know your neighbors, then you have your neighbors that are looking out for you. They start the neighborhood watch, and it, it's a win-win for all the residents, so, do those block parties during the summer. Thank you.
Alderman Tempest?
Thank you. Uh, number of items, number one, I lost a battle tonight to own some property outright, but that happens. I got my points across, uh, and thank you all for being so patient with me. The number one thing I'm noticing in my alley, and probably down in the first ward, we have a lot, a lot of alleys, and we used to have the summer help come in and clean them there, and they're getting overgrown. I know it should be the homeowner's responsibility, in some cases it is, in some cases it's not, but we have a youth conservation group, I believe, and I believe we used to let them use the property on North Chena C Street for a while. They look for projects. This would be a good project for them to take on, uh, through their, they'd probably be looking for help, somebody to follow through on that, and see if we couldn't get the, the conservation group to come into the alleys and start getting them cleaned up and cut back. Some are halfway shaped, but the growth of the bushes and so forth, it becomes a point where cars are scratched and so forth. Uh, so I would hope somehow we could maybe, uh, get to that, and somehow in the future, I sure would like to see us going back to part-time summer help. I think that was just a great injustice to our youth through union contracts. We had to stop that because we did get a lot of work for the money out of those kids, and it taught them something, and some of them, it helped them get onto school.
Sure.
So, I would hope sometime, but in the meantime, maybe the conservation group could get involved in that somewhat. And again, I, I want to thank Public Works, I, I thought they worked real hard. Brush pickup, I told them it's going to take two or three months to get it done. I don't think I'm going to be that far off. As Tom makes a liar out of me, and he's trying to, I know, so, but I ask the people to be patient. If you, PFI, I call it Onyx, if it's in four-foot bundles and under forty pounds and cut up with twine around them, they're supposed to take it, and it's unlimited. There's not a limit to it. It's in our contract. Uh, so some of that you could cut up yourself with a little elbow juice. Turner, don't put your head down, you, you can do that too, uh, and get busy, okay? Okay, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman May?
I'm going to start off by thanking my neighbor Alderman here for retracting his holdover. I appreciate that, and I respect you.
But, I did try to beat you.
I know you did, but I, I, I respect you.
Thank you.
And thank you very much. Congrats to Main Street on fabulous wine and art stroll. Wednesday in Waukegan, you can start off at 8:00 AM at Joplin's Java for the Main Street event. From 11:00 to 2:00, you can go to the farmer's market at Christ Episcopal Church, and then you can end the day at 7:00 PM at Bowen Park for a free concert with Bowen Blues. Um, I also would like to send out my thanks once again to Tom Haggerty and the Public Works crew. They went east to west, and the seventh ward was, most of the seventh ward was picked up after the second storm, and I know that they're anxiously awaiting their pick-up again, but they have to understand, there's people out in the west side of our city who haven't been picked up since the first storm. So, we have to wait our turn. I appreciate your patience, you've been wonderful. They're, they're going to get to it, I promise you. Public Works is going to come by and clean up the brush from our parkways, so thank you so much for your patience in that matter. And I just want to remind my residents that I am available, and I do do, uh, email correspondence and newsletters. If you email me at lisamay7th@gmail.com, lisamay7th@gmail.com, I'd be happy to add you to my list. Thank you.
Alderman Valco?
It was, uh, the eighth ward's turn to get hit this time, and, boy, did we get it this time. Uh, Heather Heights got it good, Stonegate and Castle Crest got it good, Midlane Estates, where there's several police officers, including the big Kahuna, who had to clean up his basement and get it hauled away. We've got several inches of water out there, uh, in our basements, lost some furniture and stuff. Um, everybody that spoke here tonight were my constituents, uh, the people, Mr. Stratham down from Bur Oak and Cashmore, we walked through, I walked through s- a few homes with six to eight inches of sewer water, uh, in the basements, all finished basements. The, and then the coup de grace tonight was Ms. Maldonado in the 1700 block. I cannot imagine, and I don't know how she's held it together these last three or four days, coming home, and my whole basement up to the ceiling, and another foot into the second level is underwater. Uh, and this is the second time for several of those people up on Bur Oak. Uh, second time, actually it's the third time, in, uh, for those people on Bur Oak. They had it done two years ago and four years ago. Ms. Maldon, uh, Maldonado had it done two years ago. Uh, Mr. Haggerty and I have become very close friends since, uh, the storms and really the last week or so, on, on a very friendly and cordial basis, and the people up by my area, up at Midlane and up by Bur Oak, we've got it narrowed down, and I, I may not be talking out of turn here, but it's coming from across the street on Wadsworth, no ifs, ands, or buts about it. So, what we're going to do is, Tom and I have already discussed it, and I know the mayor, you have also, the, uh, we want to get together with the Lake County Department of Transportation, the Forest Preserve, the City of Waukegan, the Village of Wa- uh, Wadsworth, et al., and have some form of meeting, and I, gentlemen, I, I've got to get this done because those people were just devastated up there. Uh, you saw the emotion on some of the people here today. Um, again, I cannot imagine anything that bad, you know, the, the third storm and then this rainstorm, I got a couple inches in my basement, which is nothing, okay? I lost some furniture, big deal. These people here, fifteen and twenty thousand dollars of, and their insurance companies are not going to take care of it. You know, what do they do? Walk away from their house? They just walk away? We're going to have to, have to do something, Mayor, and I know you're adamant about this, and, and I know Tom is also, uh, and I'll be right there with you because, uh, I've almost as much as promised these people that something's going to happen, and I know we're in a financial crush. Uh, I've been looking at some of the, the revenues things, we're on an upbeat, uh, the city is doing good, uh, whether or not we're going to be able to do some of the sewer connections, um, uh, we're just going to have to do something. And, and also, and I forgot, and I apologize to those of you that are watching, Tewas Farms, again, got hit. Uh, the, uh, the emails that I got was, uh, "A river runs through it," like, uh, the old movie, but they got hit bad, and it's been going on for the last six or seven years up there. Um, be patient, um, Alderman like myself are, are new, uh, we just got in, but we're, we're pulling for you, and, and, and I'm telling you right now, if there's anything I can do for you people out there, it's going to happen. Thank you.
Alderman Rivera? You know, uh, y- you know, we can do something about it, especially in, in the near future. You know, we have potentially, you know, hopefully several developments, and this is where the accountability has to come, in terms of, uh, when our staff looks, and we have a great, right now we have a great staff in place, but it's very important for our engineering, uh, department to look at all these issues, when, especially when they're building new residential areas. You know, look at all that stuff. How's this water going to flow? You know, where's it going to go? Uh, you know, those are important things that, when we approve or sign off on these things, that we got to make sure that it's being built according to the plans. So, yes, we can do something about it for future developments. Unfortunately, you know, when somebody, someone had to sign off on these, uh, developments, but, uh, yes, we can do something about it. Uh, second of all, I commend, uh, Tom Haggerty. Uh, I commend your patience, you know, with, uh, especially your, your staff, I commend them as well, and, uh, I too have told my, uh, constituents out in the ninth ward, please be patient. You know, they're going to be there, uh, to pick up the stuff. Uh, I've gotten to several complaints, especially out west. Uh, sometimes I feel like saying, you know, I, "You want to see some brush? I'll, I'll take you to go see some brush." You know, but, uh, but again, you know, they're being patient, and I know, uh, sooner or later, you know, it's going to be picked up. Uh, I do want to, uh, also thank the fire department and the police department for coming out to, uh, uh, to the block party up, out there in Pleasant Hill, uh, led by, uh, Jermaine Soto. She did a great job. Uh, kids had a lot of fun, and I, uh, thank you for having the, uh, the fire department and the police department over there. I appreciate it very much. It was very nice. Uh, also, finally, uh, I'm happy, uh, to say that I'm going to be a, uh, grandparent to a, a grandson, so I'm, I'm excited about it, both my wife and I, and, uh, she's due, Amanda's due in, you know, early December, so we're, we're pretty happy about it, so. Uh, I also have, uh, you know, I'm, we're, I'm very, I'm an advocate for asthma research. Um, this, uh, next Wednesday, August 10th, very excited about it. Uh, we're going to have our 10th annual Rafael Rivera III Asma Research Golf outing, and I'm very excited about it. It's going to be our 10th annual, and, uh, we're looking forward to a, a great time and, and a successful event. Hopefully, we'll see you there. Thank you.
Alderman Cunningham?
We have three things here. Uh, one, I would like to send the condolences out to the Davis family, uh, and the Art, Art Barnes, uh, the Barnes family. Art Barnes, who's a former supervisor in communications, is that right, Danny? His dad passed this weekend, and, uh, uh, their family was here, so I'm going to send our condolences out to them. Uh, Ms. Ms. Davis, Ms. Maggie Davis, um, uh, her, she's the grandmother of, of Kevin and Waldo Johnson, Mr. and Mrs. Johnson, their, their mom. Um, Ms. Davis, I think she was ninety, ninety-two, ninety-three years of age, and she succumbed, um, on Saturday, but, uh, our prayers and thoughts goes out to their families. Um, second, the, the brush pickup, um, I know Tom and his staff has been, just been, um, doing, as we all say, a fantastic job, but i- if we could, Mayor, um, Tom, you know, I, I know you, you spoke with us individually, i- do you think you can probably say a few things as to how your strategy is going? So, I, I know a lot of times we get these, these things over the, through us directly, but, uh, maybe a brief of exactly what your strategy is from now, from the beginning to now to the end. I think it, it just helped, you know, it, it's good to come from the Alderman, but it's great to come from you, Tom. Thank you.
The way we're moving on the, on the brush pickup is, we're moving from east to west. Um, we've been moving from east to west from the very beginning. After the storm of the 30th, which was a tornado storm, we were, we had to go back to the beginning of the east. Um, we, just to clear up what was, what had come down in the road, we did not start from the beginning in that storm. We went back to where we were prior to that storm, and we're continuing east to west, the storm of the 11th. We, again, cleaned up what we, what we, uh, had to clean up for that storm, and we're continuing from east to west where we had left off. We're just about, we should be at Lewis Avenue this week, and be jumping across Lewis Avenue, uh, working our way west, uh, later this week, and going westward from there. We probably won't be back to the east side of town for at least another three weeks, but the good thing is, is further west we go, the lighter the brush load gets.
Okay.
And then we come back to the east side where it's real heavy again.
You know, and this is always thrown out there, and I'll maybe, you can answer this, or maybe Tina, it's a, if we had more money to help you out with that, resolve the issue?
It's, it's equipment and, it's equipment and trucks. I mean, we've got, we've got additional equipment and some trucks, but, you know, I mean, you can, you can only, you can only put so many in the, in the, in the dump where we're dumping it. Um, it's, it eventually gets to the size where you need multiple places to dump, and we don't have that.
Okay, and then, and I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood, it's not that, it's not a lack of service, it's not a lack of people, it's just, it is what it is at this point.
We're moving as fast as we can. To, to date, we've picked up probably 50,000 cubic yards of brush since, since June 23rd.
Fifty thousand, okay, all right.
Imagine 50,003 by three by three squares. That's about what we've picked up to date.
So, I, and it's, and, and again, uh...
A lot.
A lot. Bottom line, it's a lot, so, and, and again, you, your, and your entire team is being commended. Um, I know I took a, I often say, and it's often, uh, sometimes perceived, that the southern part of town don't get what the northern part of town gets. Uh, Tom shut me off real quick, told me to come up here about 1:30 and take a ride with him, and I, I was amazed as to what, you know, the seventh ward, the sixth ward, the eighth ward. I, I just could, I was, and I'm, and I even took other people on the same rides that Tom took me on. I just cannot believe the amount of brush that is still, the, the, I just couldn't believe it.
Some of the areas have taken us four and five days to get through. Castle Crest was, just as an example, three pieces of equipment, nine trucks, four and a half days.
So, it's just, you know, it, it's a testament that, you know, one, our staff, the people that we have, will do the job that they're given, regardless of what the situation is, and, again, uh, thank you for that explanation.
You're welcome.
And so, uh, if I get phone calls, I'll give them, not your cell number, but the office number. Yes. Thank you, that's it, Your Honor.
Alderman Conken?
Thank you. I'd just like to reiterate the comments of Alderman May. Uh, I think the people in the city of Waukegan have been fantastic in waiting for the brush to get picked up. Tom, I know you're doing a good job, Tom, I know the guys are all working hard, uh, but I got to commend the citizens. Uh, the phone calls are definitely, I'm explaining to them that, uh, you're working east to west. A bunch of people in my ward feel you should be working south to north, but that's okay for now. Uh, that's something you might want to consider in your next plan. But, no, I, I get, uh, you're doing a fantastic job, and, uh, the citizens of Waukegan, just as, uh, to reiterate, please just be patient and wait, and we'll get there, and the brush will be picked up, and that's it, I confess.
Alderman Moiseo?
Yeah, just to, I used, I used to always say that the chief of police had the hardest job in Waukegan, but not this summer. Mr. Haggerty, that, that job goes to you for this summer, and...
Unless you count his basement.
And, uh, I don't think people understand, this is actually worse than a blizzard. I mean, it really, we, we always, you know, get worried in the wintertime about the snowpiles and that, our overtime budget and all that. Well, as Alderman Tempest says, it's only snow, it'll melt. Well, it'll melt.
You didn't get hit with three blizzards, though.
But, yeah, we, and we got hit with three monumental blizzards, blizzard-like storms, and, uh, I, I've driven with the, with Tom. He, they got a system on how they're doing it, not just east to west, but how they're doing it, and it's helped their product, their, their ability to pick up a lot of brush quickly. So, and, and everybody that I've talked to and explained it to, they've been totally understanding of it. I've not had one bad phone call or email, because obviously my, we're way, we're, we're as west, but we didn't get hit as hard. There was a few areas, but, um, anybody that I've explained to has been very understanding, and like I said, I said, "You want to see brush? Go up to Buckley Hills." Go to Buckley Hills, you know? And I said, "There were some streets, it was a brush tunnel, as far as you could look." So, um, we, we need to, Mr. Haggerty is doing a wonderful job with his people, and, uh, after this, I hope it's, I hope it's a mild winter, or at least a mild fall for him, so he can get back to relax. I jinxed it. Uh, with that, motion to go to executive session.
Yeah, we have a motion by Alderman Moiseo, seconded by, um, uh, Alderman Valco to go into executive session for the, uh, settlement of claims. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're going to take a five-minute recess before we go in. Oh, by the way, uh, while with the camera still rolling, there's one thing I do want to encourage everybody in the city to do, which is to set your, get, set up rain barrels. Use rain barrels at your homes, you can get them through the, sometimes the Lake County Forest Preserve or Ace Hardware. Uh, we had a conversation while Tom and I were driving around, looking at all the damage that was done, and, uh, all the flooding that happened, and he felt that, uh, rain barrels would have had a slight impact on some of that, so, let's keep that in mind.
Messed up, then we're responsible for that. If somebody get caught up in there, get their arm chewed up up in there, we're responsible.
Moiseo, seconded by Alderman Cunningham, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to adjourn by Alderman Cunningham, mo- seconded by Alderman Moiseo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're done.